It was rezoned, as I mentioned, with, in addition, not only this property but this area over here as well, late in, I believe, December by City Council. And a concept plan was approved for the subject site, the 7.8 acres we're talking about tonight. The concept plan essentially establishes the basic land use design and circulation concepts for the site, and that was recorded with the county. The proposed buyer of Lot 2, which is basically located in this area, has submitted a site plan application for a senior, a new senior apartment complex with 88 units. At this time, there are no end users for either the property up here or over here on the west-hand side. Let's see, let's take a look at some slides. The first slide is, let's see, looking northeast from the south property line, so essentially, let me help orient you. Upham Street is over here in the distance. This is 44th over here. This is looking north, up the, I would say, up the access stripe towards 44th Avenue. The First Bank property is over here on the left-hand side where these large trees are. And then this redevelopment site, of course, which is fenced, is off on the right-hand side. This is standing on Upham, looking across the property to the west. In the distance, you can see the First Bank building. This is standing on Upham, looking north towards 44th Avenue at this location. This was the location of the transmissions, this transmission shop which was recently demolished. And then this is looking south on Upham. You can see the existing residential neighborhoods. And then the development site is off on the right-hand side. Just to give you a little bit of context, this is the actual plating piece of the document. It's really Sheet 3 of the plan set that you're looking at tonight. And I had Sarah superimpose it over the existing aerial photo just to give us some context to, so people can actually see where things are happening. So, again, to help orient you, we've got Wadsworth, or, excuse me, 44th Avenue up at the north. We've got Upham Street down the side on the east. This is the First Bank building. This is the Panda King Restaurant, which is not included as part of the subdivision. So we've got Lot 1 at the northeast portion, Lot 2, which is the redevelopment site for the apartment complex, and Lot 3 over here on the west. And we can go back to that if you have any questions. This is actually the first sheet of the plat set. It's what I usually call the declaration sheet. It's got the, kind of, the standard boilerplate language on it, the signature blocks, the legal description. We go ahead and acknowledge some cross-access easements and utility easements on it. This is actually the second piece of the plan set. Now, this is actually showing the existing condition. The property within the parcel, and I'm going to, again, orient you, 44th Avenue at the top, Upham over on the east-hand side, was platted over in here as part of, let's see, it was called the Times Square subdivision, and it was approved in 1981. What you're seeing on that is, kind of, the existing condition. You can see some of the access easements with, kind of, this loopy configuration and some drainage easements, also utility easements. All of that, of course, goes away if the new plat is approved. This is really the heart and soul. It's the third, third page of the plat document. And as I mentioned before, we've got 44th at the top, and then Upham Street over on the right-hand side. The plat does create two new public streets with this document. The first one is Vance Street, located in this area. It runs down, essentially, the east side of the Panda King. And then down here on the south, connecting with Upham Street, is 43rd Avenue. We're showing Vance is having 60 feet of right-of-way extending south from 44th, and West 43rd will need 56 feet of right-of-way dedication. Of course, they will be built in accordance with the city's street plans and in accordance with the Streetscape Manual as far as those public amenities zones. There are also right-of-way dedications on the plat for various locations within the 44th Avenue existing right-of-way, and there's also a one-foot wide dedication occurring on Upham Street, on the, that would be the western side. And, again, I would note that all of the proposed streets within the development would be consistent with the city's newly adopted Streetscape Manual. There was a traffic study which was submitted as part of the package. There will be a new signalized intersection at 44th and Vance. The construction of this will eventually include pedestrian signals, curb ramps, and so on. And the study will require installation of the signal once one of the lots, probably earmarked for commercial, is developed. So that would be, again, let me find my cursor, this Lot 1 over at the northeast portion, and then Lot 3. There are a couple easements that are being dedicated by this plat document. That would include access easements. One of those crosses at this location, shown in green, and it does provide access to the Panda King Restaurant and also access over into Lot 2. And then there is another dedication, which is shown in blue, which is to serve as the detention area for all three of the lots. This will be the main detention area for the subdivision. Let's see, we have included all of our typical utility easements around the perimeters of the lots, and also cross-access language on that front sheet. Let's see, there's also a small sign easement which must be located up here, at this location, to provide signage for the development. Again, there is a drainage easement proposed at the northeast corner of the site. This is to serve for all three lots within the subdivision. We're not sure at this point whether that will be an above-ground or below-ground detention area, kind of, based on what the development scenario for that lot would be. We did do our standard referral process. All of the agents, agencies responding have indicated they can serve the property with improvements installed at the expense of the developer. Public Works has approved the plat, and they are in the process of continuing to review the drainage report for the property. Renewal Wheat Ridge did come to the conclusion that their proposed subdivision plat is in compliance with the plan in place. The one thing I do need to talk about a little bit is the parkland dedication. As the commission is aware, anytime we have a residential subdivision, there is a review for the impact on parkland and park needs for those new residences in the development. Since we are looking at a residential property on Lot 2, 88 units, we needed to refer this to the Parks and Rec Commission. We have a formula in the subdivision regulations that guides us on how to do an assessment of that formula, and it's based on the number of units and a certain amount of square footage per dwelling. Based on this calculation, which is, in my mind, really, in more, for more of a suburban context, where we've got single-family development, this would result in about 1.4 acres of public park or a fee in lieu of parkland. And, like I say, it really doesn't envision this more urban context. We did approach the Park Commission, and it was requested that the parkland dedication be waived just due to the fact that there would be the requirement for onsite amenities. I know with the multifamily portion of the development, there is proposed to be some, some common patio space that would be for use of all the residents. There's proposed to be some common garden plots where people can take advantage of that. And so we, there was a recommendation from staff that perhaps this fee be waived. Parks Commission did review this at a meeting held on July 20th, and in lieu of waiving the fee, they decided to require a fee in lieu of, in the amount of $25,000, which would be amortized over the next five years. Again, this is really not Planning Commission's purview. This is a recommendation from Parks, and it will be reviewed by City Council, who will have the final approval. Okay, so in a nutshell, the property was rezoned to mixed-use commercial earlier, or, I guess, late in 2010. Saffas has reviewed a concept plan required by the mixed-use zoning, and that plan sets the development standards and circulation concepts. The new plat will create three new lots, and it does dedicate right-of-way for extension of Vance Street and West 43rd Avenue. And then it also creates access easements and an easement for the stormwater drainage facility for the development. We have concluded that all requirements of the subdivision regulations have been met, that utility providers can serve the property, and that, again, it will facilitate development and of the new mixed-use center in the Wadsworth Town Center. So with that, we are giving a recommendation of approval with just the one condition, that the applicant continue to work with Public Works on the drainage component of the subdivision. So that would conclude my presentation, and I will try to answer questions.
Great, thanks, Meredith. Any questions? Anne?
And it may be Mr. Pronto that can explain the concept of having 43rd Avenue dead-end in the back of Ross and Big Lots, effectively, downright where you are, right there.
Right.
Oh, I'm not 43rd, Vance, excuse me.
Vance Street is right here.
Yeah.
It's not dead-ending, it's connected to Vance. So it completes a street connection between 44th and...
But, I mean, on this end, it's going to end up behind Big Lots and Ross, right?
There's also provision for Vance to continue south into the parking lot at Big Lots. So the grade of the...
Right, there's a grade there.
...Vance will come up, and the intent is to provide access to the Big Lots Shopping Center through the light at Vance.
Perhaps if I go back to the other aerial, it will show that a little better.
Please, thank you.
So here's Vance, on the north side of 44th, and it comes down, 43rd's down here.
Right.
So it does go into the parking lot of Big Lots.
It's in the back corner of the parking lot.
And the intent is that, to have some direction, that it sweeps to the front, to the west?
It goes, the, yes, 43rd will connect to Vance at that location. So it'll, that way neither street becomes a dead-end street. They're connected, and so we have continuity at that location.
Okay, and then 43rd, the intent is that it'll, based on concept plan, Exhibit 2 concept plan, that will skirt just to the south of it and dead-end it Upham right...
Doesn't dead-end, again, it connects it Upham.
Right, I mean...
So it's a connecting, it's a connecting street between Upham and Vance.
Okay, the terminology, I'm sorry, semantics, okay. So it meets up with Upham right about at 4310 Upham?
Yes, very south end of the subject property.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Well, all of the curb cuts and circulator streets that's currently between Panda King and First Bank, will those be closed, or will those remain?
Tim, would you like to...
I certainly can. There are, there's basically just the one, it's the, we all call the First Bank Alley, but it's actually an access easement. It runs across several properties to the south. That will remain open, and will provide access to Panda King and to First Bank.
And it will still go out onto 44th?
Yes. It's intended, though, that there will be a continuous median in 44th, so it'll become a right-in, right-out. There will be no crossing of the median into the access driveway.
Scott?
I have one question, Meredith. On the Exhibit 2 concept plan, under open-space concepts, the lots 2 and 3 have, you know, they're saying approximate acres of green space, but there's nothing for Lot 1. And it appears that, when I look at the memo by the Parks, they say approximately .40, .40 acres of green space for Lot 1.
And quite honestly, I don't have that in front of me. They, all of the lots, when they are developed, will have to follow the requirements of the mixed-use district, which I believe are 10% landscape coverage or 15% based on what's being proposed. So there is a calculation in there, but I don't have that in front of me, Scott, and I do apologize. So that will be, of course, assessed at the time of site plan for development.
I didn't know if, I didn't know if it was something to do with, maybe, the detention pond wasn't quite sized, and so it was just, kind of, left out or...
Well, I think it's just that we don't know yet. The detention pond is still somewhat of a moving target, just because we're not sure what they will do, whether it's above-ground or a vault.
Okay.
But they will definitely have to meet the standard in the mixed-use zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Meredith? Okay, thanks. All right, and next we'd like to hear from the applicant. If you could give us your name and address, thank you.
Steve Art, Economic Development and Urban Renewal Manager for the City of Wheat Ridge, 7500 West 29th Avenue. The Urban Renewal Authority has reviewed the subdivision and fully concurs with staff's conclusions, and is available if you do have any questions.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? None, okay. All right. Meredith, do you have the sheet? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there something, George?
Yeah, it may be for the applicant, it may be for staff. I just, I wanted, I know that we have, we have talked about this property in the past, and I wanted to confirm that the Exhibit 2 concept plan was, in fact, the plan that was in front of us a couple months ago.
I do apologize, George, yes, you're correct.
This is it, okay.
Anything else? Okay. Meredith, do you have the sheet of folks who signed in to comment?
There are a few folks on the roster.
Great. Okay, if, I think what we'll do, if you'd like to speak on this matter, give a comment on this matter, we'd love to hear you. I've got a list of names here. What I'll do is call each of you up by name. If you'd, if you'd like to comment, you certainly can, or you can just, we can just note that whether you were in favor or opposed, right here on the sheet as well. So don't feel obligated to speak if you don't want to. But first I'll call Rebecca Zachmeider. Yeah, if you could come up here, just so we can get it for the record and state your name and address for us, and let us know what you have to say.
My name's Rebecca Zachmeier, I live at 4200 Upham Street. We moved into the neighborhood in November. Being fully aware that this was going on, we went online and researched and read a lot of the information. My husband went to the planning office and looked at a plan. Since that time, the plan seems to have changed, so we have a few concerns. Number one, based on tonight, it would be really important to know what the drainage is going to look like, in lieu of it not being a drainage pond with not a park around it. If it's a concrete above-ground drainage area, that alarms me. Another thing was that on the plan that we viewed before we moved into the neighborhood, there was condos, not senior. It was mixed-use, both condos and multi-use housing, but not all senior-dedicated. We also know from moving into the neighborhood that Wheat Ridge is a 58% rental area, and as far as housing, I guess I'd like to see a little bit more ownership in the neighborhood. We do have several apartment building rentals already on Upham Street, and I'm not sure how that changed from what we saw down in the planning office down in this building earlier. So those are my concerns.
Great, thanks for your comments. Joseph, forgive me if I don't pronounce this right, Sadar, Seder? Great, if you could come up and give us your name and address, and give us your comments, please.
I'm Joseph Sadar, and my address is 4355 Teller. I'm wondering if someone can give us a little bit better explanation as to these 88, or whatever the number of units are of this senior housing. Where is it going to be located? How is it going to be located? What are the heights, et cetera? It seemed like that's passed over, and we have no idea what it's going to be. So can someone please explain that a little bit?
I think, I think when we, after we get everybody's comments, we can maybe talk about that a little bit. There was a concept plan, I believe, that was reviewed in a previous meeting. I don't think we saw any elevations or anything, because I don't think that was...
As a matter of fact, I even think the concept plan was administrative review.
Okay.
So the site plan for the apartment units are, is under review, and you're certainly welcome to come in to City Hall and take a look at it.
Okay, along with that, will that be published somehow or another, or so that everyone, without maybe coming here, can get an idea of what the, what it will be, or what is proposed to be?
Actually, it is an administrative review, so the best opportunity for you or any of the folks in the neighborhood to take a look at that would be to come on into City Hall and take a look. It is all public record. Tonight, we're just reviewing the division of the land, so...
Yes, absolutely. But then the proposed area for this housing is going to be on the southeast corner of that property, is that right? Okay, okay. Well, I'll bug somebody again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. If I can remind everyone to address your questions and comments to the commission, what we'll do is we'll, kind of, amalgamate all of them, and then after everybody's had a chance to speak, we'll address your comments and concerns to the applicant and to the city, so that we can, kind of, aggregate, aggregate any similar comments into one discussion. Judy Capra. Hi, if you could come up and give your name and your address, and your comments, please.
Yes, I'm Judy Capra, and I'm at the 43rd and Teller Street, so one block east of Upham there. I must say that I was surprised to hear that this 88-unit development thing had been approved, because we try to stay somewhat aware, knowing that there's lots of things going on, and a lot of neighbors are still thinking we have a library and Jeffco offices and things like that going in. So to think that this is as far along as concerning. Seeing that it is, I'd say, when we're looking at just the subdivision, if it's 88 units that we're looking, this is cart before the horse, too. I don't know why the plan's already approved when we didn't have the subdivision, but I'd say that Lot 2 should be larger. For 88 units, 2.25 acres isn't enough. That's 39 units per acre, where in an area where we generally have four units per acre. So the Lot 2 should be allowing more space if we're really going to have 88 units there. I don't like the idea of waiving or paying off the park or open-space area. That's what Wheat Ridge has always been known for, or takes pride in, is green space and trees. And I can see why, with 88 units proposed, and I think the code says you're supposed to have .016 acres per unit, that's why they would need 1.4 acres for a public park, and they only have 2.25 acres on this Lot 2. So Lot 2 just seems small for the proposed development. So in the subdivision, that doesn't seem adequate if this is truly the plan and what they'd like to put there. If we're truly living with that 88-unit plan, the lot should be larger, and the park should be, we need to have the trees and open space. A few areas of green space and common patios isn't going to add up to the 1.4 acres in the zoning. The process for the review, I find intriguing. We came to a meeting, I'm not talking about the subdivision right this second, it's connected to it, though. There was a proposal to have the bus stop for, to go up to Cripple Creek for the gambling, and they just wanted to pick up and drop off passengers there. Now, why were we all notified and went to a meeting on that issue? Because we can get through an 88-unit development approval, and we weren't notified, and the only reason we even knew about this is our neighbors across the street told us. So this whole process is seeming a little odd. And I know that's off, on a tangent, but the main thing is the size of Lot 2 and the need for the open space. Thank you.
Great, thanks for your comments. Next up, Verna Shaw. Hi.
My name is Verna Shaw, I live at 4195 Teller. I've lived in the area for approximately 12 years, and I have a couple of concerns about the street allotments. I can understand 43rd, the Vance, the back alley, as you call it, from the bank, but if you, I mean, people north of 44th on Vance have unpurposefully fixed it so people cannot run through their neighborhoods. There's at least one big bump in that area so that people can't run through there. With this, a light allowing people to come into that area, I'm afraid that people are going to be running through that area. I mean, I do live at the dead-end of Teller. People go very quickly through my area. I am worried, since there are children in that area, that with them opening it up with the two added highway allotments, or street allotments, whichever way you want to phrase it, that is going to encourage people to speed more, to hurry more, plus the fact that, I don't know, 43rd will be below the current hill that's right there, or it will be on top of the current hill that is right there? Because if you're going behind the bank, when you get to Ross and Company, you're going up a hill. So I'm not sure if you're going to lower the hill, you're going to even out the hill, plus the fact, if you're going to make a median from Wadsworth to Vance, what is it going to do to the businesses, the pep boys, the small banks that's there? You've already done a median all the way up to approximately, what is it, 46, that cuts off anybody turning into those areas from Wadsworth, except for when they cut across the median. And I'm really worried about the traffic. I mean, I know you guys have done a study, but Wadsworth is very, very heavy. 44th is very, very heavy. Getting out from Teller and 44th, it's very hard most of the time, unless you get very, very lucky. And I'm really worried, and the equivalent of 88 more cars to that area permanently, I'm afraid they're not going to follow that 35 mile an hour zone. I'm afraid that they're going to be going a lot faster, and there are children in the area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Suzanne Capra, would you like to say something?
You might add something, if you'd like.
Next up, Fanabelle or Annabelle Shaw? Next up, Lorraine Newman? Newman? Ah, yes, hi there.
I'm Lorraine Newman, and I live right next door to the, what's going on now, and they said something about opening up 43rd Avenue. I am landlocked right now. I haven't been up until just they closed it all up, and I still could get through there. But my question is, if they open that up, will I be able to have a cutout, a curb, so that I don't lose... that I don't lose, so I can get to my lots, is what I'm trying to say?
Okay. At 42, 4281 Uppam?
I'm right on the, I'll be right on that 43rd Avenue.
Okay. We'll see if we can answer that for you.
You can?
Well, we'll see if we can. I'll ask, yes.
And is that the trees and everything that protect me from all the noise and everything? Are they going to take those down or is that, is that an easement yet for the public service? Are they going to take those lines down?
That's a good question.
They've been making a lot of noises the last few days. They've got six-foot holes and everything. I guess they're going to go underground with a lot of the electricity and, right? And is that big tall building going to be right, right on 43rd or where's it going to be? That would put that right in my, I'll look right out my bedroom window and see four stories, that close to 43rd.
We'll ask all those questions?
I got a lot of them, haven't I?
That's, that's fine.
And you've got to better have a lot of answers. My son-in-law usually does all this for me and tonight he lost his father, so he's not here to represent me, so I'm up here trying to do the best I can.
Well, I'm sorry for your loss, ma'am. We'll see, we'll see what we can do to get some answers for you. You bet. Angelo and Lynn Martinelli? Okay. Gayan Fae Frey? Fae, my apologies.
Gayan Fae, 4320 Uppam. Surprised to know that 43rd is going to come through, will be basically aimed at my bedroom. Very concerned at another cut-through, adding traffic on 44th or on Uppam. Already very, it's used as a cut-through. People will tell you that they use it to avoid the lights on Wadsworth. Increase in traffic. I'm a retired schoolteacher. I've been terribly concerned for the families in the apartments down the street. They, the speed is not 25. It's posted as 25. It's, they do not use that. If you're going to have a light at Vance, they're going to be cutting through on 43rd to avoid a light. It's already hard to get out at 44th, almost impossible to get out at 38th. I'm really surprised that the fire department is okay with increasing the traffic on the street. If, it doesn't appear that you have plans for a light on either 44th or 38th and you're going to add 88 more units with the traffic, the parking, what, what is the street going to become?
Thanks for your comments. Andy Horn? All right.
Good evening, my name is Andy Horn. My wife Christine and I live at 7175 West 42nd Avenue, which is about a block over. It's at the corner of 42nd and Teller. I've got a number of concerns about this. Primarily, the whole notion of an 88-unit senior living complex seems to fly in the face of what I was informed that the, the usage was for, which was, you know, the, it was, I was under the impression it was going to be mixed-use. I was also under the impression it was going to be commercial and, you know, things other than a large apartment complex for limited-income seniors. I was, have been looking forward to seeing the Wheat Ridge 2020 Plan and also other plans that Wheat Ridge has that were supposedly going to try to help bring in what they referred to as strong families into the neighborhood. I feel like this has got nothing to do with that. I feel like this is a bait and switch that's been done with this property. You know, my wife and I have been delighted to see the demolition of the Antique Mall. We've been looking forward to seeing what was going to be developed there. We had no idea that it was going to be something like this. If we're looking for low-income rental space in Wheat Ridge, it seems like Wheat Ridge has a glut of that type of rental property already and I don't know why it is that we need to, to put that up, you know, to add more low-income rental units to Wheat Ridge. The notion of a divided or a median on 44th going up so that, that's pretty, I have strong concerns about that. The fact that anyone who then wants to exit the bank onto 44th and continue to the, to the west is then going to have to proceed east, turn off onto a side street or do a U-turn in 44th and then turn around and go and proceed west, seems like it's going to add to, significantly to the congestion around in 40, around the 44th and Vance, Teller and Uppam, that in those areas. Another thing that I have a concern about is your stormwater easement, which happens to sit right on top of a currently active soil and groundwater cleanup site. The former transmission facility is also the site of a, what looks to be a soil vapor extraction system meant to clean up gasoline contamination from when that was an active UST facility or gasoline retail fueling facility. So once you put in, once you start flushing stormwater through the soil there, any residual phase hydrocarbons that are in that soil will probably be flushed out and remobilized. So you're going to short, you're going to basically get in the way of the current remediation system that's going on right there. Let's see. Yeah, the, the whole notion that open space is going to be met on-site for 88 units with some tables and, you know, some tables and patios space does not seem to be very, very well thought out. The thought of having a traffic signal at Vance, two blocks from the traffic signal at Wadsworth, I don't see how that is going to really help, help with the, the traffic congestion there. And I can easily see 44th being backed up as far as, you know, as far as Teller with basically a parking lot-style traffic flow going through there, just the same way that Wadsworth is basically a parking lot going south as far as Three Acre Lane, there by Safeway or no, there by the Ross and Big Lots. You know, a lot of times, I do anything that I can to avoid that stretch and I think a lot of other folks will, too, you know, considering or are doing that considering what we've just heard about the traffic on Uppam Street. And also, we get the overflow cut-through traffic on, on Teller as well, except they don't realize that Teller's a dead end down there, so folks race their cars down, pass the dead end sign and then turn around in my neighbor's driveway and then race back out. They're going fast, they don't know where they're going, but they're going, they're going to get there fast. Let's see. So those, those are some concerns that I have. Also, I have a significant concern about the way that this was, that this subdivision was approved before it was platted and I'm not a, I'm not a specialist in the machinations of the planning commission and planning process. However, it does seem like the cart was put before the horse. It seems like you should get it platted for something and I can understand the, you know, the extending Vance down and also extending, or you know, putting 43rd in, what, a one-block-long stretch of 43rd, but it seems like we should have, I didn't know anything about this, this planned subdivision or this planned development. My wife and I have been under the impression that this was going to be mixed retail and commercial space and it's a, a big surprise to hear that not only is it going to be an 88-unit low-income senior facility, but that it's already approved and we were never made aware of that despite being on the Wheat Ridge Development mailing list and so forth. So yes, I've got a lot of concerns and I would like to oppose this and oppose it tooth and nail. Right now, you know, I feel like I've been, you know, feel like it has been a bait and switch activity that's gone on and I'm all for mixed-use, mixed-residential, but not like what has been, this isn't mixed, this is homogeneous. This is homogeneous residential, 88 units in two and a half acres or on this six-acre site or however many acres it is. It's not mixed. This is strictly low-income senior living and this is not what is going to bring the strong families into Wheat Ridge. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments. If that's it for the list, is there anyone else who's not on the list who would like to comment? Okay, yeah, come on up. Give us your name and your address, please, and give us your comments.
My name is Craig Ayler. I live at 4200 Uppam Street and my wife pretty much covered what I was concerned about as well, but the last speaker pretty much summed it up in the largest form and he was quite, well, he did a very good job of all the problems that are coming with that. My wife had mentioned that when we first bought this home, we liked the way the, the neighborhood was. We were concerned about the building, but I went down and I talked to the people and I looked at the maps. That plot map is not the one I looked at and we never received a notice for, what, July's meeting, so we didn't know that all this was already being done or taken care of. Now, that drainage, I don't think you want to do, like he, the previous speaker had mentioned, I don't think you want to flush water through there. That would be a kind of a disaster if you think about it. The plot map I saw was, that was the multi-structure and closer to the homes was pretty much a, a, a park of sorts. And that makes it a little easier. You cut a park, the road going into Uppam, it'll be bad. It's already, we have the fire department and police and apartments down going through really fast and nobody's monitoring it. So you start making a cut-through past Wadsworth and 44th, it's really going to be problematic. So anyway, I oppose this in its current form. If they go back to what they originally said it was going to be, then it has a chance. We have a DMV there, we have a library there, we have multiple commercial things as it was promised. Apparently, somebody changed. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Yep, come on up.
My name is Suzanne Capra and I live at 7070 West 43rd Avenue. I've been in touch with Jerry Tuttulio and I can't understand why he's been buying down condos to get property owners in, whereas here, you folks want to put in 88 units of one-bedroom each, with saying it's going to be for seniors and what guarantee is that? But it seems to me like you've just overdone that, a number of rental or units and more rental units, see? And can you imagine 88 cars? How tall are these units? We don't really know. Are we hearing four stories? That's awfully high.
I'll, I'll ask that, I'll ask that question and see if I can get an answer for you. I don't know.
You know, also, they put that park in for the children over here on Kipling because those brothers who owned that land couldn't get anything built because the neighbors on the east side didn't want their view destroyed. And they tried and tried to sell those and they never could, so the city just went ahead and put a park in there. And this is probably before your time because when you're 83 years old, you've seen a lot if you've lived here for 50 years. But it just seems to me like we keep getting new bunches of people in with different ideas. We were really excited about a library. And what, 88 units? Are they going to be frame units or they, we have no artist concept of what that's going to be, but except they'll all have cars and those cars will go down Uppam and then we can never get on 44th. Anyway, I said my two cents words, that's it.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay. At this, at this time, I'd like to close the public comment portion of the hearing and the, give the commission members a chance to ask some questions.
Actually, I was hoping to hear from the, the applicant in addressing some of the...
Yes, definitely. Yes, I've got that here, thanks.
Is there anyone that you're not clear on that's suitable or above this?
No, I, I think we've, I think we've got it. Yes. Yep. Okay, Anne, questions for the applicant?
Before we start firing questions at you, do you want to address some of the, clearly some of the, the questions that came out of the, the neighborhood questions?
I would be, I would be happy to with the understanding that tonight, we're talking about the subdivision, not the ultimate development on the subdivision, but I'd be happy to talk about the apartments that are on there. They are a, they are a four-story proposed apartment complex. They are under review right now, so they have not been approved, but they have, they are, have been submitted to City Hall.
Is it, is it too late to submit a public comment or review or did it not even get reviewed?
It is, it is administrative review as per the, the zoning on the property.
So the public hearing is closed?
Correct.
Can we, can we, can we hear from the, can we hear from the applicant before, can we let him have his say before we pepper him with some more questions? We're asking the questions, we've, we've got all your questions here. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone asked, will the apartment butt up against 43rd Avenue or they will not? They actually make an L shape, so one section will long, run along Vance Street and another one will run along then the northern border of that property. I think they had questions about, are patios considered open space? As Meredith said, only a portion of the project that is counted toward open space is patio and common area. There is an area at the north end of the property and I don't know the exact size that is going to be used as a garden for the property. They're designing that, that they'll be able to grow fruits and vegetables, those flowers in there will be used by the, the residents of that property. As well as they're within Lot 1, when that develops, there will have to be a public space that is developed within that lot. The size of that is not determined yet, but there will be a, a, a public meeting gathering space within Lot 1 that is recorded with the document that is required as part of that project, which would be part of the open space on the property. What other questions commissioned, could I help you answer?
There was a question about the size of Lot 2 with regards to it being too small for the number of units and could you just explain some of the, the ideas, how you size lots 1, 2, and 3?
I am going to let our planner do that.
And also, first of all, I'd like to kind of back up a minute and talk a little bit about the market conditions. This is property that the city via the Urban Renewal Authority has invested in and even though we've got, or they have a lot of investment in the property, it is also market-driven. We worked really hard with Jefferson County to try to get some sort of public use, especially on Lot 3, which is kind of the, the lower one, and unfortunately, they went somewhere else. We have talked to other people, we originally, or another development proposal that was, was brought up was the clinic that we looked at last Planning Commission meeting. They looked at Lot 3 and decided they couldn't make it work. So it's not that we're doing bait and switch, it's just sometimes deals don't go through. So, it's not that we're doing bait-and-switch, it's just sometimes deals don't go through. As far as the location of the apartment complex, if you think about it, it's on a residential street. I'm not sure that the people on Uppam would like a lot of commercial traffic that far into it, all coming out there, so for that reason, and for a visibility perspective, multifamily makes sense. As far as, so that's kind of my disclaimer on the whole project and how we got where we are. We don't know who the users on Lot 1 or Lot 3 are going to be. We are hoping there will be some sort of commercial with office, hopefully mixed-use. We don't know that. As far as the size of Lot 2, if folks remember back in the 2009 election, there was a ballot measure that was passed that allowed an increase in height and density for certain urban renewal areas, one of which was this one. So, while most of Wheat Ridge is used to kind of the low-density sprawling suburban development, this is an entirely different context. It is supposed to be higher density to try to get more activity and more households. Granted, they're not owner-occupied, but it still is households. We need multifamily housing, is the other thing, that's affordable. And so there's a lot of reasons why this is happening on that lower lot. And again, back to the heightened density, you know, we have very specific development standards in the mixed-use zoning that they have to meet, and also architectural standards. So, yes, it is a different concept than what we're used to, but it is going to be different, and City Council and Planning Commission supported that, and this is how we're moving forward with this particular area. Does that help? Okay, sorry.
Ann, further questions?
The rest is going to be for staff, so I'll wait, but...
Commissioner, have any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question about where you guys are going to put the holding water thing. Has that ground been tested? If it's...
John Reinsma, do you have an answer for how that works? The master developer from Weston Solutions is here this evening.
Could you come on up so that everybody can hear you? Thanks.
I'm John Reinsma with Weston Solutions, and we're the master developer of the site. That ground has been tested. We have all the environmental implications of Phase 1 and Phase 2 has been done, and everything is coming back clean. There is ongoing monitoring to address one of the earlier issues.
You can hear, or you could, you know, before they come up, or the blowing.
Excuse me, can we, these are all very good questions, but can we let, please hear from the applicant? Thank you.
There is ongoing monitoring, that's currently happening. However, we also know the exact process that needs to take place in order to finalize that monitoring. There's no point in expediting that process before construction on any type of retention pond takes place. So, it's, once that goes through, it will be clean, it will meet all environmental EPA standards and everything else, it'll be entirely safe.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Scott?
Yeah, I have one for the applicant. On the site design of that detention basin, was there any consideration ever given to rotating that access instead of north-south, east-west, in between Lot 1 and Lot 2? You know, for, I guess, potential retail, kind of where that form of transmission was?
Are you talking Vance Street or that private drive that's between 1 and 2?
I'm talking at the 44th and Uppam, the northeast corner, you know, the detention, it sits kind of north-south.
Correct.
And the bottom portion, you know, definitely kind of, there's like an access and drainage easement, and the detention basement sits over a portion of that. I'm just wondering, like, you know, was there any consideration given to rotate that access instead of north-south, east-west, in between kind of straddling Lot 1, Lot 2?
Tim, I'll let Tim Perano answer that one.
Yes, they did look at different ways to construct the detention pond. It was moved north and south, east and west, and ultimately, it was determined that there will be a detention pond in that northeast corner of the property, which is kind of the low spot there. And it's going to be an earthen pond initially. It's been, it's being platted, being constructed on the platted Lot 1, and that will give the future owner of Lot 1 the opportunity to make changes if he feels it's economic. So he can take and change the configuration of the pond, he could put it underground if he wanted. Again, depending on whether or not he can afford to reclaim the property and use it as parking possibly on top. But that was one of the considerations, is make it more of a park environment between the two lots, is what I think you're suggesting, and that was looked at, and ultimately, it was decided that make it easier for future development to place it where it's being placed today.
Steve, did you have a question? Okay, any more questions for the applicant before we move to staff? Okay, Steve?
Thank you. Just to clarify, pleased with staff, Planning Commission tonight is voting on this document here, not this document, this concept plan, as I play. And we're also not within our jurisdiction to vote or make a recommendation on the apartment complex as glamorous or non-glamorous, that may be regarding the site layout, the parking, the architecture, is that correct to you?
That's correct as well.
Also, Planning Commission is not under the jurisdiction of the 44th Avenue median, that's not part of the subdivision plat, per se, is that correct to you? For improvements along 44th like that? Okay. According to the underlying zoning, the MUC, Lot 2 does meet the minimum standards in terms of lot size, lot frontage, things of that nature, without requiring variances, is that correct? No more comments, thank you.
Ann?
Mr. Perano, can you help the owner at 4281 address her landlocked concern, her back lot? As well as easement?
Yes, we can. In fact, I believe her son-in-law, who she referred to, has been in and been talking to the developer Weston, as well as city staff on several occasions. We've indicated to that person that he could, or she could have curb cut once the street's constructed, and what we've offered to do, and Weston is planning to get a price to have the curb cut, the driveway cut installed as part of the street, to save them money and trying to get that difference in price and give that to her so that she can make a decision as to whether she wants to have that built along with our street as the street is constructed.
Okay, and we were looking very closely at Exhibit 2, the concept plan, just the area between the road and what would be 4281, and we see the six-foot and another six-foot, and then the last piece to the south isn't measured. Is it another six feet?
It's random, because the street changes a little bit.
Got it.
It will all be, it's going to be landscaped, and it will be maintained by the property owner of Lot 2. They've agreed to maintain both sides of 43rd as part of their obligation.
Okay. And then, even though, even though Uppam, the management of Uppam isn't part of this, there were some concerns about speeding down Uppam and the extra traffic down Uppam, and I will, I have to admit that I use Uppam as a cut-through. I've loved it forever, but I do not speed. I can tell you that, too. Will the city listen to the neighborhood as this goes in if there are concerns about that, if it's for mitigation? Will the city be open to listening? I'm not asking you to commit now, but...
The city's always open to the citizens.
Okay.
And we don't have certain programs we used to have in place to address some of those concerns.
Okay.
But maybe for the commission and for the audience, that they would know that the engineers are predicting that during the peak hour, the evening hours, can be the time when there'd be most traffic coming onto Uppam from the project, and during that peak hour, the evening peak hour, there will be 11 cars. So we're really not expecting much traffic to come on to Uppam. The intent of putting the light and the Vance Street connection on 44th is to provide an easy, good way for folks to access 44th. And so there's really very little reason for them unless, you know, we're assuming there's going to be a very small number that may want to travel south or that are coming from the south. So, the best predictions now is that there's like 11 cars during that peak evening hour that will be accessing Uppam. I, in fact, think that we'll possibly see more use in the reverse, that we'll see more folks that are using Uppam and having difficulty getting onto 44th, deciding that they'll use 43rd and the new Vance Light to access their route. We don't anticipate there's going to be any additional cut-through because of what's being constructed today.
Okay.
Additionally, I'd like to add that the intent of having the light in place and putting the median in 44th is to make 44th a safer street in the city of Wheat Ridge. We have a lot of accidents at that current access point behind the bank. By making that a right-in, right-out, the folks that come into the bank will either access their travels to the west by going back out onto Wadsworth, or they'll come across the new parking lot that will ultimately be built on Lot 3 and come out at Vance. And then the second part is that most of the traffic that's going up and down that driveway is going to the post office or all of the shopping area. With Vance breaking into their parking lot, those people will be using the light and having a safer way to make and have access to 44th.
Okay, thank you.
Dick?
Meredith, I hate to put you on the spot, but when we were adopting the mixed-use ordinances, we provided some height and density incentives for bona fide mixed-use. How does that work in terms of, it would appear that if it's a single use, the height and density is limited?
Actually, if it's a single use, like the apartments, versus a true multi-use, where you've got like office on the bottom and apartments above, or retail with office, you have increased landscaping requirements for the single use. And also, there are parking, you know, parking incentives that we look at when we're looking at the true mixed-use versus a single use. So those types of things, they still have to meet all the setbacks and the architectural standards, those would all remain the same. But there are also incentives for different types of open space amenities, like, you know, rooftop gardens or what have you, so...
And the other one is not really a question, it's just a comment. I remember when we were working on the Lutheran situation, the light that came out on 38th did not go directly across the street, so that the neighborhood to the north of Lutheran, there was not a direct pull through. Cars could go east or west, but not directly north into the neighborhood. And Commissioner Timms is right, that's not what is in front of us this evening, but that thought certainly crossed my mind.
You're seeing, I think it's Brentwood, that light is across from Brentwood or Balsam, and there are turn improvements that restrict the traffic for going straight across. They either have to turn left or turn right.
Yes, that is correct, yeah. And I know that's not what is in front of us this evening.
Any other questions for staff? Meredith, I might have one or two. Mr. Horn did make some good points about the area that started being dedicated as a drainage easement, in terms of that being on top of the current abatement or reclamation or remediation site. I'd feel more comfortable looking favorably upon the sort of placement of that dedication in terms of how this is being plotted out, if we had those studies or numbers available to us. I'm taking the applicant's word for it, of course, and that's fine, but, you know, hard numbers, it's always a good thing to have. Mr. Perano, do you have, do you have any, did you have a chance to review those?
No, we have not. We are aware, though, that they have, on behalf of Urban Renewal, determined the process that's needed to abate the remainder of the nuisance. There is very little contamination that they're dissipating today, and so they know what they need to do to stabilize the earth, and the longer they leave the mitigation in place, the less stabilization that will be required, as you may know. So that's the purpose, and we feel very confident, and we know that both the state health department and the city will be sure that we don't create additional problems by opening that property up.
So in your opinion, we're not placing any undue burden on any future users of that site in terms of making that abatement harder by having that be the only place for having a detention pond?
Correct.
Okay. Let's see. I want to try and make sure we're answering everybody's questions. Ms. Newman, did you hear what Mr. Perano had to say in terms of the curb cut? Did you hear what Mr. Perano had to say in terms of the curb cut earlier? Okay, good. Could we have a little more, because we are talking about some traffic rights of way here in this plat, could you, I understand the rationale behind putting a light in advance and having Vance go through to draw off, hopefully siphon, traffic that might be caused by development of these lots away from Uppam and onto Vance towards 44th. Does staff have any additional details they'd like to share in terms of the traffic study that would touch on running 43rd Avenue through, as opposed to just having Vance a dead-end right at the big lots there?
At this time, there were plans at one point to have some continuity onto Wadsworth, and that still is a possibility, depending on the development of Lot 3. That becomes somewhat troubling in that having the street connect through may and may not, depending on the use of Lot 3, may cause additional traffic on Uppam. We know what is predicted today with it just being a short connector street between those two streets today. So, it's probably, I guess in summary, it's probably less intense in traffic onto Uppam as designed today, rather than having 43rd or some other street connecting all the way on over to Wadsworth.
Okay. I think that's all. I've got any additional comments or questions? Would anyone like to give a motion?
Just a quick discussion item.
Yes.
And maybe just more of a comment for my part. For me, based on the criteria that we have set before us for subdivision plat, I will be recommending approval of the plat, but I do recommend to the Urban Renewal Authority that they do everything in their powers, and maybe more, to continue with extensive outreach for whatever occurs on lots 1, 2, and 3. So, I think that would just be a good precedent and continuation effort on the Urban Renewal Authority's part for what occurs in this area, in this important area. Authority's part for what occurs in this area, in this important area.
I think we would entertain a motion of some sort at this point.
I'll move.
Thank you, Steve.
I move to recommend to approve case number MS-11-02, a request for approval of a three-lot minor subdivision plat with right-of-way dedication on MU-C zone property located at 7340 West 44th Avenue for the following reasons. Number one, all requirements of Article 4 of the Zoning and Development Code have been met. Number two, the utility providers can serve the property. Number three, it will facilitate development of the site in compliance with the approved concept plan with the following condition. Number one, the applicant continue to work with the Department of Public Works on technical drainage requirements.
Point of order, it's not an approved concept plan yet. It is?
The concept plan has not been approved, but site plan.
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Okay. Do we have a second for Mr. Timms's motion?
A second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I would like to comment on that, that I will also be supporting this because what actually is in front of us this evening is a sub-development and not a up or down on the 88-unit housing over there. And the reason I was asking about the height and density incentives that we had in the mixed use is frankly, I understand the bait and switch, because when we were talking about mixed use, I was hoping that we wouldn't be looking at this density on a single-use type of project. And I also have some real grave concerns that it seems to me that the Urban Renewal Authority, their job is to consolidate land so that it all can be redeveloped as a big hole. And this looks like a partial, kind of a piecemeal redevelopment. And generally, when you redevelop a property, you put your anchor in first, and then the anchor kind of determines who groups around it. And I'm not sure that that unit qualifies as an anchor. But frankly, all of those comments are not what's in front of us tonight. I will be supporting it.
Other discussion? All right. I'll call for the vote then.
Can the motion pass as eight zero?
All right. I'd like to thank the staff, the applicant, and everybody, all of you who came tonight to comment. The commission appreciates your comments, and I encourage you to follow this process through the various city council meetings, other planning commission meetings, and so forth, where some of your specific concerns will probably be more directly addressed. So thank you for your attention on this case. We'll move to our other items. A 38th Avenue corridor plan update.
And I really don't have anything. We do, I think we talked the last time about there being an upcoming third public meeting held at the Rec Center August 9. And so we would, again, encourage all of you to attend. It is the last public meeting before we go to public hearing. So right now, I think we're trying to target an October planning commission public hearing.
Okay.
So again, would encourage you all to attend the final public meeting.
Great. Okay. Any other?
Move to adjourn.
Second thought?
All right, vote.
And that motion passes eight zero.
Great. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.